Hello and welcome everybody, this is another interview today. Today I'm pleased to welcome Mayor Stephen Bletso, Mayor of Bridgend Town Council.
Still sounds weird, it's Steve.
Yeah, but introduce your proper title to start with. And thank you for joining me today. And we're going to have lots of discussions and I apologise to people now, I'm going to have my own little rant a bit later, so please don't take anything away from the interview with Mayor Bletso here, but there's something that's got under my skin recently, but I'll leave that till the end, okay?
Well, look, let's do this now, because I think it's quite important actually. You know, we've had a very brief chat and I think it may help if it's out there and it won't be on your mind. Let's, you know, let's talk.
But the other thing I don't want to do now, because it might turn people off at the start of an interview, when there's a lot of things that you can, are good things that Bridgend Town Council have done yourself.
Oh yeah.
As well, and there's a lot of issues and I want them to be the focus at the start.
Okay.
People can then turn off the rant at the end if they get one, rather than turn off the whole video at the beginning. Because I think they're going to get...
I don't think they should turn off, because I think there's quite something important that needs to be addressed.
Yeah, I don't think they should, but it's something, I don't get annoyed often. This has annoyed me and I want to speak about it and this is not what I wanted this channel or this page to be about, but unfortunately I can't avoid it, but we'll speak about that later anyway.
Okay, you lead.
Okay, first of all, let's start, give us a little bit of background about yourself and what is your, well, I won't say what inspired you at the moment, just give a bit of background yourself where you grew up, what your family was like and a bit about that.
Yeah, of course, born in Bridgend General Hospital, 1975. The hot, shows how old I am, the hospital I was born in was no longer there. I think once that happened, you officially qualify as old when you drive past somewhere and show your kids, that's where the hospital where I was born, but daddy, that's houses now. So yeah, born there in 1975, moved down to Wildmill. Originally to Myselvellin for a couple of months in a flat, then across to Tower of Ellen, 56th Tower of Ellen, underneath the power cables that used to buzz when it rang. Lived there till 1996, 21 years when I left Wildmill. Met my wife Freya and we moved to Tonoreval. Had children very early, I have three fantastic children, James, Chris and Hallie. James and Chris just back from university, Hallie's gone away to university. Moved away to Yorkshire for 10 years, moved up to just outside Wakefield in 2001, spent 10 years up there. Started a property company with my wife up there, ran that very successfully, sold it. Quite a high-profile company, some amazing, like, book-worthy moments in that. Having breakfast in the Savoy with Carlos Spencer and the whole of the Barbarian Squad was one of the personal highlights. Sold that company, launched a confectionery company in 2009, brought that back to Bridgend in 2011. Became Chair of the Traders Association, which I'm sure we'll come back to later on in, oh wow, 2014, 15 maybe, elected as a town councillor in 2017. And as you said, now currently Mayor of Bridgend, that's the foreword to the book, I suppose.
Yeah, very true. As you said, you were elected to town council in 2017?
Yep.
Yep, and now Mayor and Mrs Mayor.
Yes, you can see in the picture behind me, very proudly on the wall.
You've cut her head out and it's all focused on you.
Hang on.
There we go.
More of her, less of me, does that work?
Yeah, that's better, we can see her as well, it's not all about you, Steve. What inspired you to actually take the plunge and put your head above the parapet and stand for local council, as it were?
I suppose if you ask any of my school teachers, and I still talk to them now, I actually live next door to my junior school teacher, "Kids, be careful what you say in school, 40 years later you might live next door to them." And I'm still in touch with quite a lot of my old teachers and I think they'll probably tell you that it was predetermined, that I was always destined to end up in local politics, always been opinionated, rightly or wrongly. Always felt the need and the desire to express that in a respectful forum. But the, on taking the Chair of the Bridgend Town Centre Traders Association, you get closely linked to politicians at that point. And the very first thing that I did was I wrote to Bridgend Town Council, to Bridgend County Borough Council and all five elected Assembly members and the MP. And at that point I said that the traders wanted to engage with them and we got very close to them. And Bridgend Town Council would send councillors along, I think BCBC did the same, Assembly members attended, I met the MP in their office. And I started to go to, sit in the public gallery of Bridgend Town Council meetings and just got more and more involved, got to know all 19 of the councillors, started talking to them, started to get annoyed about things, started to like things, started to feel that this could be an outlet for myself. And I know when you spoke to councillor Alex Williams, he actually said that it was a co-option that made him resign from Penkoyt Town Council.
Yeah.
It was actually a co-option on Bridgend Town Council that made me want to get in there. Because I saw something very similar to his experience, but I have the different kind of reaction and I'm not saying which one is right and which one is wrong. But it was almost that, that didn't look right to me, that didn't smell right, that didn't feel right and I felt I wanted to be part of a solution to it. So the 2017 five-year elections came around, I put my name forward and started to, and there was obviously a lot more going on in the background, because obviously we've known each other for a long time now. And I started to reach out to other people who were elected as independents and I started to reach out to other people who wanted to stand as independent. And we formed this group, which at the time, the very outset, and not many people know this, the original name was the Bridgend Town Alliance, which goes way, way back. That was, wow, I mean, we were meeting in people's living rooms, in briefing room A in the Wetherspoons down in Bridgend, which is just a little corner, it's our little cul-de-sneak for it. That obviously then became changed for Bridgend, which is where we met. And I think that probably, that probably started when you messaged our Facebook page.
It was Lee Robson I contacted first, who was part of...
Okay, Lee, yeah, good guy.
And Lee put me in contact with yourselves.
Yeah.
And that's where I met you and Paul Warren.
Yeah, in the Old Castle.
In the Old Castle.
We always just meet in pubs.
Yeah, we're not barred from meeting in pubs as a personal group unless you're...
Exactly.
Councillors.
No, it's actively encouraged.
Councillors and that can't. But yeah, that's us we've met.
We met in the Old Castle the day that all of the candidates got their official photographs taken. I'm not sure if you remember that.
I had my official photograph taken, but it was about a week or so later that you arranged it for. I remember telling you at the time, when we're meeting in the Old Castle, "I'm very opinionated, I'm quite stubborn, but I listen to other people's views." I'm not sure if I'm cut out for this, I said my sister would be the better option.
Yeah, I remember.
But it's not what, I don't think it's what she would have wanted to do, but
Yeah.
if she ever wanted to do and she needed help, we're happy to help in any way we can. Because the forms to fill out are quite ridiculous. As Martin was saying, there's 22 form, 22 pages.
And you need to fill in two of the pages.
Yeah, and there's so much you have to be aware of, because there's little traps you don't really think of that can get you into big trouble, really.
Yeah, and I'm sure we'll go on to this later on and I don't want to go off on a tangent. But fundamentally, what you've just described is the entire ethos of the movement that's now known as Bridgend County Independence.
Yeah.
You get this form from a local authority that you have to fill in, you're three pages in, "Have I missed anything? Should I have written something?" And it's daunting, it's not, it's... I don't want to say it's easy, because it's not easy. It's easy when you know how and when you can surround yourself with people who know how, it takes that away from people who want to stand.
Yeah, and we were very lucky because we had David Unwin.
With 44 years of experience.
Who seemed to know everything that we needed to do.
Yeah, absolutely.
All the forms, and it's great having that depth of knowledge around you so you can learn from for future.
Forget, forget everything else and I'm sure we'll talk about everything else. Fundamentally, that's it, that's nuts and bolts what it is. The meeting that we had, you reaching out and saying, "I want to do this, I don't know how" or "I don't know the process", that's it, that is it.
And you offered advice at the time, because I wanted to stand where I lived in Brimennin.
Yeah.
And you said, "That's going to be extremely difficult because it's packed, you already have Labour, Conservative planned and then independents going already".
Yeah, it was, yeah.
It wasn't, and you advised to stand in Brinkethin, which I eventually did.
Yeah, and another thing then was, it was never, you were never told to do that and we had many conversations about it.
You advised.
Decision, advice is the key word, absolutely.
And that's what it was, it's advice and that's what Bridgend County Independence does. I know I shouldn't really talk about this one and keep it...
No, I know.
...apolitical, but
Yeah.
You don't, nobody in Bridgend County Independence tells anybody else how to do things or how to vote. We offer advice, we work together as a group, because it's very hard as an independent, completely on your own, no support, with nobody around you, to actually do the work you need to do, even just delivering leaflets as it was. I think nearly everybody, or quite a lot of people, used my nephew at the time, paying a few quid to deliver the leaflets around the area.
Absolutely.
And he was big into fitness and he was happy to do it and earn a little bit of extra money on doing it. And that's what it is, getting support and help you need as an independent. Parties.
Yeah, absolutely.
Parties are a different matter, because they've got all that in place ready for you and you don't really have to do as much.
And it's impossible for people not affiliated to parties to criticise that structure, because it helps.
Yeah.
And all an independent group is, is just the similar level of help, because, I mean, you've been there, you've stood in an election and at an election time, "Well, all right, we're a group", but we all go off into our different wards.
Yeah.
It's hard and if you can get any level of help at any time, it's appreciated.
Oh god, yes.
Yes.
I really appreciate it, because it's not easy. And we'll talk about your Sennith run later, which had infinitely more. You needed infinitely more support, because it wasn't just a little ward, you had the whole Bridgend to somehow canvass and leaflet and things like that. Anyway, that's a little bit about yourself and why you...
Yeah.
I think we went off on a tangent of why you actually stood.
I'm sure we will do lots today, yeah.
Yes.
We usually do.
Yeah, but yeah, we didn't actually get to why you stood, it was something about co-option
Why I stood?
of Bridgend Town Council and then we went off into BCI.
Because I've, I don't want to say this in the wrong way, but genuinely, I felt I could make a difference. I've got 20 years' business experience behind me. I felt the time was right to stand up for the people where I grew up. At the time I was living in the Old Castle Ward, I chose to stand in the Morveward. Some people don't think that's right, some people think you should stand in the ward where you're living, but I felt this affinity with the Morveward. I'm a Wildmill boy, I lived in Wakefield, I'm a Wildmill boy, I will always be a Wildmill boy and I wanted to represent the people there. I stood at town and BCBC level, I didn't win at BCBC level, I won at town council level. And yeah, it was that wanting to make a difference, wanting to be a voice, wanting to work and I know you've said we'll maybe talk about the waste situation, but wanting to be that community leader, that person where people can go to to get help. And I think people would say I've got a pretty big mouth, it was, that moment was the time to put my money where my mouth was.
Yeah.
No blindly shouting from the sidelines to get involved, to make a difference. So it was, it was that that led me to stand and it's probably been one of the best five-year experiences I've ever had. I, you know, I've run companies, I've had, I reference the amazing time I had at Home Finder. Being a councillor has been so much more fun than that, I've really enjoyed it.
Anyway, we'll get to Welfin in a bit, but
Yeah.
Your Bridgend Town Council is the largest town council in the county, pretty much, yeah?
Yeah.
And you do quite a lot of work and you do see that about, we see it with the, a few years ago, the Armed Forces with the aeroplanes in the middle of the town, excellent.
Yeah.
What other things does the town council or have they done in this last four years so far?
Well, the, as we've said a couple of times, we're coming up on another five-year term now.
Yeah.
So next May, we're all going to be, not all going to be, we would be required to seek re-election and I will be seeking re-election next May, no spoilers, but I will be standing next May. If I don't get re-elected, I would look back on the last five years on Bridgend Town Council with enormous pride. I think what Bridgend Town Council has done, a mixture of work by councillors and staff, you know, staff are an important part of every council, has really prepared Bridgend Town Council for the future. Now, you're a community councillor, I'm a community councillor, it's strange, you've got Welsh Government tier one, BCBC tier two, community councils tier three, and some town councils, I mean, especially Barry, you know, your big ones, they're almost like a two and a half, they're not, they're not Merthamower and they're not BCBC, they're kind of...
In that grey area.
Yeah, they're getting a lot more services that are being passed down to them, because the local authority are shedding responsibilities because of budgetary constraints. So what's Bridgend Town Council done, I think the first thing we did, which was really important as soon as we got in five years ago, was we looked at what was coming as far as legislation was for the third tier and we future-proofed staffing-wise. When I was elected in May 2017, Bridgend Town Council had two and a half staff, well, obviously the half being a part-time, so we had two and a half members of staff. We've got 13 now and we're taking, are you okay?
Yes, my son's just creeping in the door, it's okay Jake, you can go in the kitchen if you need to.
Not a problem at all? So we did a full staffing review and we looked at what was coming down the line and we've put these staff in place already, so we now have 13 members of staff, I think it's 13 members of staff. I'm on the personnel committee, I should know this. But we've structured the council ready for what's coming and that's going to have to come for other community councils, because we're not, this level of government is not going to get away with a part-time clerk, it's not going to get away with, you know, one and a half, there's a lot more coming our way. And not just that we took 13 staff on, that we put them all on the recognised living wage, not just the national minimum wage, we recognise living wage for all of our staff and we work from there. But we've taken, you know, BCBC closed all of the toilets, we know consultation, they just closed them. Every community council has had to step up and where necessary put them in. The town ones are more complex, because you've got these concentrated user areas, like town centres, which you, you know, you guys haven't got in Coitie, it'd be nice to have a public toilet, but not essential.
Yes.
So we've worked in partnership with the market traders and we've used legislation that we're allowed to give. We gave £10,000 to the market traders for the fit-out of a stall. Now, the market traders run the unit, so what we've done there is we've protected the public from not taking on the ongoing costs.
Yeah.
But we've put the budget in place, we gave them money, I think it might have gone up to £12,000, but, you know, it, we've done that, that's a real difference in the community. We've put on wartime Bridgend every year, outside COVID, which is the events that you're talking about. You know, we, the budget for that's £20,000 a year, for what an amazing day in our town centre, one that creates memories. We're the custodians of Remembrance Sunday, which is singularly the biggest event, you know, the biggest remembrance service in the county, also takes part under Bridgend Town Council. We've put blue plaques in, which may seem trivial, but is also a very important aspect, because I'm of the belief that to go where you're going, you've got to acknowledge where you've been.
Yeah.
So, you know, we've got the father of Concorde from Caroline Street. That's amazing and people don't know that, so let's put up a blue plaque. It's a small thing, it's a trivial thing in many people's eyes, but it's legacy stuff. That blue plaque will be there in 20 years and people will now be reminded that the brainchild of Concorde is from our town. The Regeneration Committee of Bridgend has authorised reverse vending machines in Bridgend and that's going through at the moment. So, you know, there's all good stuff through the council itself. The downside, and it is an issue, we have the highest precept of all community councils in the borough.
Yeah.
That's, that's an elephant in the room, I think, I looked earlier, every house in Bridgend Town wards pays £107 a month, sorry, £107... £107 a year? But I'm of the ideology, the thinking that there's a cost to everything, everything in life has a cost. It's important to return the value in excess of that cost. Do I think, do I wish that it was less than £107 a year? Yes, I do. Do I feel that we give the residents back more than £107 a year? Yes, I do. And that's important, because it's not our money as councillors, there's 19 councillors, we're custodians of public funds and when you sit in those meetings, it's so incredibly important that, you know, there are financial regulations that cover us and one of those is that for every job you get three quotes. But, you know, let's get around this thing of, you know, when a company sees a quote request from a council, "I'll put about five grand on that", they don't care, it's not their money, well, we have to care.
Yeah.
Because we're answerable to those who pay that precept and every finance meeting, that has to be scrutinised. There is that good value and that's a really important aspect for me. So, you know, and don't forget, this is actually important, gets overlooked quite a lot. Yes, we have the highest precept, we've set four precepts, we're just about to start now setting our fifth precept application. Two of the four years, no precept increase. The first year that we increased the precept was purely to take on the additional 10 and a half members of staff on a living wage. The second year we put the precept up was to allow for buying a half a million pound town hall on behalf of the residents. Because for all the work that I said we've done, we've also bought Tiar for half a million pounds and saved that for the community, again, giving the community of Bridgend its first town hall in 50 years. So £107 a year, yes, it's a lot of money, yes, times are hard and from my point of view, one of 19 councillors, whenever I sit in a meeting where we discuss finances, I'm always thinking of those who struggle to pay the council tax, because it's important, it's really important.
It is, and I think you're right about the history and Bridgend has got a lot of history. We've had the Romans here, we've had the castles, we've got so much history and a lot of it is going to waste. And I'm sure we'll get on to this discussion later, we've got Ireland Farm, President of War Camp. Yes, it was a prison war camp that housed Nazis during the war, but it's part of our history and we shouldn't shy away from history, even if it's bad. You should always highlight the bad, so we don't repeat what has happened, so we can be wary of what things happen.
Yeah, two things, two things have just come, see, I'm really annoyed now, two things that are going to come out from... No, 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 it's fine, politics, I mean, I'm in politics.
Yeah.
Government and everything else annoys the hell out of me. Ireland Farm, Ireland Farm is on the wrong side of the A48 for Bridgend Town Council to financially support it. The boundary is the A48 and Ireland Farm itself finds itself in Merthamower Community Council, which I've got the precepts on my computer, is tiny.
It's one of the smallest community councils.
Exactly, and we as a town council, we're three grand short of £700,000. If it was on the other side of the road or the Boundary Commission would move the boundary, we could help Ireland Farm.
Yeah.
And that's, that's so frustrating with politics, because you're right, Ireland Farm should be visited by every school child in our area, so they understand the importance of what it did throughout its history, it has to be protected.
And a lot of people don't know that it had one of the largest prison escapes in Chichester Wall.
I mean, there's a Hollywood film waiting to be made there.
Yeah, well, there is, it's like the old Bridgend Police Station, that was an munitions factory, where the Bridgend South Wales Police is now and they're building there, that was a munitions factory during the war.
Absolutely, but one of, on the relation of acknowledging the past, one of my proudest moments, we also recently just had the 100th Remembrance Sunday.
Yeah.
And a lot of people may not know this, on the 100th Remembrance Sunday, we invited the Mayor of our twin town from Germany to stand alongside our mayor. And on the evening of that night, I sat in a room and we discussed the faults and the failings and everything that went wrong in that. You don't correct history by ignoring it, you address it, you acknowledge it and you respect it.
Yeah, and we see now, it's not just ignoring it.
Sorry, my camera's slipping as well, sorry Luke.
Oh, don't worry, it's not just ignoring history, but trying to change what history was as well, that seems to be happening a lot now. Yeah, I know about the British Empire, I've read a lot.
Yeah.
It had its good points, but it had serious failings and yes, there was mass genocide on the part of the British Empire, but we shouldn't shy away from
No.
the good it did as well or the bad it did.
No.
Because that's the only way you learn, is by mistakes, by what's gone in the past.
Absolutely, and obviously the other thing that I was quite infamous for was painting Kovea Drerion on the side of my sweet shop.
Oh, yes.
That's a part of our history, that should be taught in school, because when you and I, political nerds, talk about the fact that Welsh MPs are powerless in the UK system, that's an important lesson, that's something that we shouldn't be hiding away, it's something that we should be discussing. And it was actually part of the reason I asked the artist to put it on the side of the wall, to be honest.
I can't see anything wrong with that, if, I think, people who don't know, it was a little village in North Wales that was compulsory purchase order, which
Absolutely.
has been talked about with Bridgend Town Council today in oggy bloggy by, I think by...
It has been, yes.
In regards to the town centre. And it was set up as, done for a reservoir to feed water to Liverpool many years ago.
You didn't ask for it and didn't need it.
No, didn't ask for it, didn't need it, it wasn't even to supply people in Wales, it was to supply people in Liverpool. And it wasn't asked for, it wasn't needed, but the government went ahead with it anyway. But that's here or there, we're here to talk about Bridgend as a whole, that's North Wales and
Yes.
we could go off on tangents for hours.
But the important thing Luke is, I was 40 until I knew that story and the only reason I knew it was because my son went to university in Aberystwyth and we used to drive past the original mural.
Yeah.
So things like that are important, because we have to educate the public and the future generations.
I don't, I agree with that, I don't think it should be just left up to our schools, but to families as well, to the parents. My dad was the one who told me about the reservoir, I can't pronounce it, I'm not very good at speaking Welsh.
Drerion.
He was the one, when I was a child, told me about it. He told me about the problems that happened in Aberfan and the tragedy that happened there and things that went up before it and after it and how the government...
Doesn't make them look good.
It doesn't make them look good.
No.
My dad was the one who told me that and he told me that from a young child and he always, he was never politically aligned to any party, he didn't, he liked... The only thing, he wasn't a fan of Labour, I will say that. The only person in Labour he liked and he said would only ever vote for Labour was when John Smith was in charge.
He was a good man.
In the 90s, my dad had met him a few times, because my dad was on the RAF and he said he's a good, honest, hard-working man and that's what Labour should have been and should be. And unfortunately, John Smith passed away and then we got Tony Blair as the leader of Labour.
I can still, I was in San Francisco on holiday the day he died, I can still remember it happening. He was a, he was a good leader and I think he was a, he would have been a very good Prime Minister as well.
Yeah, I think my dad would have voted for Labour in 1977, I think it was. But he couldn't vote for him, because he didn't like Tony Blair, didn't like the new kind of politics that was coming around. So that was him, he liked down-to-earth people who just spoke their mind and weren't trying to be duplicitous, like you get a lot of politicians nowadays. Anyway, we keep going off on tangents, it's no...
I know.
I was very good with Martin, we did do it, but do it with you, because I don't see you that often, I see Martin all the time.
Exactly, he talks to you every month.
Yes, I see him quite often with the council in Coitiehire. Anyway, this week you did a live video in Wildmill, which I watched. I wasn't sure whether I was actually watching it live or partway through live, but I can't say your camera work was awful when you said, "They don't want to be on camera" and the few times you just crossed past their faces.
Hey, I challenge you to try and do something like that, you're talking, you're looking and people know my history of trying to video, stepping on black thorns.
Yeah, why do you think I do it this way over Zoom, not any other way? Anyway, there's been an announcement in the last day or two about the waste contract in Wildmill and you had some good news today, which I saw you posted an hour and a half ago, if you want to take it away with the problems with Wildmill and what's being done and what has been done.
Yeah, of course, I mean, the... Yeah, of course, I mean, the the situation, I said at the outset, I stood in um Morva because I'm a Wild Mill boy. And, you know, I still, there's still people living in Wild Mill I grew up with, and I I talk to them very regularly. The problem with Wild Mill specifically, but also it's not exclusive to Wild Mill, there are other areas around the county, is that these communal waste areas weren't considered when Kia were awarded the contract. That's not me making that up, that's minuted in B C B C minutes. The complications surrounding these communal waste areas were not considered when the contract was drawn up. That's fine, you know. But how you deal with it afterwards is important, and 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 personally, I don't believe it's been handled or dealt with properly. The people who live in these areas have suffered for four and a half years now because of that original mistake. And making mistakes is human, you know, let's not get away from that. That 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 happens. My issue is that it's it's not dealt with properly. Now, what they have in communal waste areas, you're talking about Wild Mill, you're talking about Healdurain, and you'd be talking about stuff all all around the borough, is that you have areas where the waste collection bins can't, the the waste collection lorries can't get to, in the same way that they do for for on-street collection. So they're supplied with um what they're called wheelie bins. But they've got four wheelie bins for twenty houses. Now, I'm all for reducing waste, but you you don't do that by taking away the provision, because it it causes further problems.
Yeah.
The the other issue I have, and it became very evident early on, was, and I'm not saying you you would do it, okay, Luke. I'm just giving, this is just an example, this is just a for instance, you're allowed two waste bags per fortnight, and I'm sure you adhere to that. But what happens if you go, what happens if you go over? Are you gonna keep that bin in your house, or are you gonna try and get rid of it somewhere?
Actually, I'm part of, I mean, I I actually currently live in Cummer, so I'm part of Newport Talbot where
Right, okay.
I don't have that limit, because everybody.
Well, even better then, so you can you can ask the for instance, you can answer the for instance. The 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 problem originates from houses who live in an area where they're restricted to two bags. They have a party, they buy something from Amazon, not Amazon, because that comes in plastic, but they have something that generates more waste than they're allowed to dispose of. Well, they take it to the tip. But Wild Mill's just round the corner, they've got communal communal waste areas, I'll just pop it down there. Because it's easier, it's more convenient, and as humans, when we see a pathway and we can see the grass and it's quicker, we walk across the grass, because it's more convenient for us. And the residents of Wild Mill have been telling me for four plus years that people are travelling to the area and dumping waste. They've provided me with evidence that it's happening.
Well, we saw it clearly on your video.
It it look, it's been happening for four years, and the the problem the problem is, is how you deal with that, because you can only deal with it through enforcement. You can't just remove it, you know, if you lived in Wild Mill and somebody says, there's waste outside my house, if you take it away, then you're just encouraging other people to just take it, that they have to deal with enforcement. My biggest issue is that obviously, Valleys to Coast are the social landlord there, and Valleys to Coast were the first ever social landlord to take over a community asset transfer of an entire area like that. And again, that contract wasn't written very well for the residents who live there. So again, an example, I live in Brackler. If uh if some if some waste is dumped in the park opposite me, I can phone the council, I can report it on Fix My Street and it'll get taken away. Easy. If somebody dumps in Wild Mill, then I can't report it to B C B C, because it's Valleys to Coast land. The Valleys to Coast have to go and collect it and dispose of it. Now, Valleys to Coast don't have a waste disposal contract, so they have to employ a company to dispose of the waste, and there's a cost. So where do Valleys to Coast get their money from? They get it from a service charge from the residents. So whereas I can report it and it's taken away as part of my council tax, if somebody flytips in Wild Mill, the residents have to pay a service charge to take it away. And let's not avoid the fact that people who live in Wild Mill are some of the most socially deprived people in our area. They are count, they're they're ex-council houses, so we are exacerbating the problem for people who live there. And this comes back to why I get into politics, because these people need somebody shouting for them. Because they get talked down to. I mean, when I started on this, and I'm I'm not making this up, and I know it's something we're gonna come along to. When I first raised in this issue, people said, genuinely said to me, ah, it's only Wild Mill, don't worry about it. And how offensive is that? Because they pay council tax, they pay more, they pay a service charge.
Yeah.
They pay their rent, they pay, a lot of people there own their own houses and live there through choice, it's not, you know, we we we've got to get past that. It's not right, and I've fought for this for five years, and I mean, the 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 results today was that twenty-one bin lids that I'd reported back in June have been replaced. Well, that is a result, but they should have been fixed at the end of June, Luke, to be honest, because I ran a food business in Bridgeend Town Centre, and I used to get E H O uh visits, and I could be spot checked through uh shared regulatory services. If I didn't clean my bin, I would be marked down and possible enforcement action. Those food bins in waste community areas weren't cleaned for four years. So you had twenty houses putting food into one wheelie bin, and it wasn't cleaned for four years. Wild Mill's by a river, rats lives in rivers. I'll, you know, I'll leave the rest to you.
It it's, it's not the fact that even if the rat spout is a health hazard anyway, but the smells of the flies they attract, the other vermin or whatever, it and it attracts normal animals, normal pets, like cats as well.
Yeah, yeah, and and look, I mean, if if you watched the video, one of the women I was trying not to video was Rachel. Uh I grew up with Rachel in Wild Mill, we go back forty years. There is a purple bag waste collection point about fifteen yards away from her window. Somebody has put them out in the place where they're meant to take them, put them out, and they weren't collected. So Rachel phoned Kia and said, you've left some purple bags behind. The response to Rachel was, they're not your bags, you're not registered to put purple bags out, we can't respond to you, you need to get the person who's put them out to phone us. So, she's meant to go around and knock everyone's doors and say, excuse me, are they your nappies? Can you report them not being there? Take them away.
Why make things complicated? It it's.
The one thing I say to everyone, I didn't say it when I met you, because I didn't know it at the time, people get into politics because you get frustrated by something.
Yeah.
The more you get into politics, the more you get frustrated. It it it's, it's it's about, and and again, as someone we'll come on to, politics is about opinions. And and somebody's opinion is different to my opinion, is different to your opinion, is different, and it's how we work together to 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 find a resolution.
Yeah.
But when it comes to stuff like this, I will shout and shout and shout about it, because I have seen people in tears because of where they live. I'm not talking about Rachel, I'm talking about other people now. Rachel will just swear at somebody, that's Rachel. But but people hating where they live because of things that are imposed on them. Now, it's my opinion that that's wrong, it's it's my opinion that somebody like me needs to stand up for them. And that's why this five years has been so rewarding for me. Because, yeah, a little victory today, twenty-one bin lids, and perhaps they wouldn't have been fixed if I hadn't reported them, so that that's positive. There's so much more to do on this, and this whole thing of awarding them a new three-year contract without a tender, I'll no, no, just no. That that can't happen, because it's wrong and it needs to be changed.
Yeah, I I I spoke to Ian about this last week, and it was all bungled from the start. Now, when cycling in Bridgeend originally came around in the mid, early two thousands, and it was rolled out area by area, so they could see where the problems were, adjust, and go like that, instead of doing one whole area the whole of the county at the same time, so everywhere suffers. So you you just roll it out area by area, but with this latest contract, it was, that's the date it's signed, and everybody changes.
Cast your, cast your mind back, Luke, because, look, this is a political blog, let's get political. The Kia contract was meant to start in March twenty seventeen.
Yeah.
It was delayed for unknown reasons until June, the month after the elections.
Yeah.
Do you remember the carnage in July of twenty seventeen?
Oh, God, yeah, we had one of our hottest summers then as well.
Absolutely, and there was rubbish everywhere. And 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 there are mechanisms within the contract to reclaim money back from Kia for missed um collections.
Yeah.
That summer was so bad that they actually did enough missed collections to have the contract ripped up.
Yeah.
That's how bad it was. It's better now for the majority of us, it's still not better for those who live in communal waste collection areas.
Yeah, and don't think in any way we're bashing the operatives that work on the bins, they have a hard enough time and they do a fantastic job. But their man, it's the management above, and it's B C B C, who haven't done things correctly for them to do their jobs correctly. It's like, in your video, you were saying about how all the residents have to separate their recycling to the special bins, and you even it was like it was ordained or something, you had a big lorry there, collecting and dumping it all into one bin lorry, mixing it all back together again, making the initial separation completely and utterly pointless.
Yeah, let let's not go any further than saying that the operatives of Kia have been one of the unsung hero during Covid. You know, they very few, there was very few weeks where there weren't collections, and that's down to the people who actually did the job. That's hard work, that's dedication. Not a single second of complaint for those who carry out the job they're asked to do.
No.
The criticism of those who put the structures in place.
Place, yeah.
Absolutely.
You you can't blame the operatives for the structures that they've had to follow, unfortunately, it's not their fault. If that, if they stopped doing it the way they were told, I'm sure they'd get stern talking to.
And I I I will know that some of them will have raised concerns themselves.
Oh, yeah.
And and not, you know, it's not taken forward, but
No, but.
That's the way of the world.
But there we go, so we've had our, but Labour now have come up supposedly with a new plan. I I haven't.
Have you seen the bags?
I haven't seen the details of this plan yet, I haven't had time to look into it, so if you could give us a little bit on what this new plan is, I think it's the third one they've had now, is it? Something like that, because they had a plan at the start, they had a plan a couple of years later. When Sarah Murphy was, just before the S N F elections, oh, we got a plan for Wild Mill, because that was a big thing. And now the plan is come to a fruition, well, what they say.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not gonna ridicule it, but I'm gonna say it's useless. Um they've given every resident a blue Hessian bag to take their rubbish to the bins. And they're gonna start with the education of residents again.
But it's not the residents that need the education, they are doing.
There are, there are a few, Luke.
There are, there are a few, I I I agree with that, but.
Yeah, 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 and and again, it's something that we can't ignore, there are some residents who live in Wild Mill who do not adhere to the rules. My issue with this education again was back in two thousand and seventy, they promised us two things, education and then enforcement. We're nearly five years down the line and we're going back to the education. You know, there has been, I think it was twelve enforcement notices handed out for flytipping in Wild Mill, which includes putting the wrong things in the wrong place in four years. There's there's twelve incidents a week, you know, we've had twelve, or I I I don't wanna, I'm working off the top of my head, it's not something I've looked at before the chat. It needs enforcement, it needs people, you know, was it last summer, they employed people to follow dog walkers around to ensure that they had their dog waste bins in their pockets, and if they didn't have dog waste bins, uh sorry, bags, that they would be issued with a fixed penalty notice?
Yeah.
Let's employ those people, let's get them into these communal waste areas, let's get them issuing tickets for people who are doing the bins wrong. Because that is as much of an issue as people who were leaving dog waste down Newbridge Fields.
Yeah.
You know, they could do the one, let's do the other. Because I personally have sent photographs, I've been to Wild Mill, I've opened bin bags, I've taken photographs of envelopes with people's names and addresses on from outside the area. I've had photographs of a white van emptying rubbish out into a communal waste area with the registration number on. I've provided both to be told that I'm not an official data collector on behalf of the local authority, and that evidence is inadmissible. So let's get people who can get evidence admissible, and let's get them down there doing the work I'm doing.
But if, let let's take um dash cams at the moment. Now, police are asking people to take dash cams of, uh send their footage in. I I've seen the links in Northamptonshire and other places, send your footage in of drivers breaking the law, and we will prosecute, and they have been prosecuting them.
Yeah.
Are they official data collectors now, these people with dash cams? Because it's exactly the same situation, and it shouldn't matter whether you're an official data collector, you're an elected and official, but a a community councillor for Morva, for Wild Mill area, so that's part of your duties, making sure that the area is safe, secure, and and a nice place for people to live in, that's part of your duty, so collecting this data shouldn't matter.
Do you want, do you want an ex, do you want an exclusive? Because I've not spoken to anyone about this up until now.
Oh, go on, then.
Reason. I reported bags in in Wild Mill, uh and and this, as I said, it's not exclusive to Wild Mill, there's Healdurain, this is a huge problem there as well. Uh but obviously, uh Ian, Michelle, Freyr, uh Old Castle, I'm Morva, so I I'm talking about where I'm elected. Um I went down to Wild Mill, I did exactly the same. I knew there was no point me taking a photograph, because it would not be admissible, I'd already been told that, so I sent an email. I've said there is waste bins down in Wild Mill, uh that have got envelopes in that has evidence that they're not from the area. You've got cast iron, beautiful evidence here. The reply I had was, during Covid, we are not allowed to empty any bin bags to look for evidence. Now, I haven't spoken about that up until now, because if I had done, it would have encouraged other people to do it. And I had to be responsible in that, and there is a balance there. I know, I was gonna say I have a loud mouth, I have loud thumbs when I post things in anger. Um I didn't publicise that, because I didn't want people to think, well, hey, it's open season, we can put rubbish wherever we want. But for the last year, they haven't been able to open bags, because they wouldn't authorise the people who can get the evidence to open the bin bags because of Covid, and it's just like, come on, we've got, you know, we've, we've got to do something, because we have the sixth highest council tax in the UK, or Wales, or whichever way around, it might be ninth in the UK. And we're back to, fine, but let's offer the sixth best service. Let's not charge the most and be the worst, let's charge good money and give good service, because you can do that. And I don't think all these people complaining on social media about having the highest council tax would complain if we were better than we are. Let's do more. And 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 that's that's where I am with Wild Mill and and the whole waste thing. Let's be better, let's do more, let's serve the residents better, and this whole thing of, oh, it's only Wild Mill, let's get past that.
It shouldn't make a difference where it is, if it's if it's within the county, you have a duty, not just a duty, an obligation to do your best for.
Absolutely.
Uh every councillor, every person who is elected, whether you've stood and you've won your seat unopposed, you're still an elected official, whether anybody voted for you or not. Uh your responsibility is to everybody, regardless of whether they voted for you, whether they voted for somebody else, or whether they didn't vote at all. And it doesn't just extend to adults, it extends to children as well.
I I played rugby when I was younger, I was okay, I wasn't the best, I was okay. But my ethos was to be the best rugby player I could be.
Yeah.
As as a councillor, I want to be the best councillor I can be. As a council, as Bridgeend Town Council, I want to be the best town councillor I can be. And all I want from B C B C, because, hey, you know, I'm probably one of the loudest British, I want B C B C to be the best that B C B C can be.
Yeah.
Are are they at the moment? That's that's probably open for debate.
Oh, yeah, everything's open for debate, regardless of what council.
But let's be, let's be the best local authority, let's, look, we can't make Porthcolby Blackpool. But let's make Porthcolby the best Porthcolby it can be. We can't make it Brighton, but let's make it the best seaside town that we can make it.
Yeah.
Let's not, let's not look for excuses, let's not just, let's not talk ourselves down, oh, we can't do that, because we're here. Let's make our area the best area it can be. We can't achieve anything more than our potential, but let's realise our potential.
Ex- exactly. So we talked, talked about Wild Mill, we talked about what you've done in Bridgeend Town Council. What have you got coming up for Bridgeend Town Council in the next eight months till the election? And beyond that maybe planning?
Covid has had an enormous effect.
Yeah.
Um it's it's kind of curtailed a lot of what we wanted to do, we hadn't done wartime Bridgeend for two years. We tried to do a late um wartime Bridgeend this year, around about this time actually, um but guidance was very not sketchy, I'm I'm not, I'm not, I'm not wanting to sound negative, because I am a big follower of 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 medical facts, and and we have to follow the facts. Um, you know, I I said it's a twenty thousand pound budget, I think it would have been folly for us to try and put something on, spending twenty thousand pounds of public money, and either it not happening or not doing a a good thing.
Yeah.
Um we've got Remembrance Sunday coming up, um we are um renovating Tiaral to make it into a fantastic community asset. To make it into a fantastic community asset. Some of the plans that we've got for there are just simply amazing. Um. And, and, and that's the key thing. It's not a town council venue. It's, it belongs to the people. You know, they're paying for it. We paid five hundred and twenty five thousand pounds of their money to get it. We, we've got a budget of it. I think it's just under eighty thousand pounds for the renovation. That's their money. Um, so it, it, you know, it's driven towards having them as, as a fantastic community centre. Not in the, the traditional community centre words, but a community centre. Um, Christmas will then come on. Um, so we, you know, we, Bridgend Town Council put all of the lights. Oh, I've just knackered my phone then, pulling the cable. Um, so we've got the Christmas lights to put up and then we'll have the plan. At the moment, we don't know what we can do with our, um, we've always had a Santa's Grotto as well in, in collaboration with the Lions. Um, and then we put the precept together, you know, it, it, it's all kind of boring stuff, but it's, it's so, so important. You know, every penny has to be accounted for, you know, the auditor checks over everything. We've just finalized our audit for last year. And, and we're gonna try and finish off, I'd love to finish off the projects that we've planned for five years. That's simply not gonna happen. Um, it, it, you know, it, it's a shame, you know, we should now be on our third set of blue plaques installed. Um, we're just at the start of the second lot. So that the second lot of blue plaques will hopefully be finalized. And we know we're, we're marking the, the memory of some other fantastic people from our area. Uh, with the help of local historians. Um, and, and then it'll just kind of. We'll go into the, the new term, which I hope to, to, to be a part of. You know, I'd love to say, yeah, I'll be a town councillor in June. That's not within my gift.
No.
Um, I'll campaign hard enough for it to happen, trust me. Um, but you know, it's, um. Yeah, I mean, there's lots of stuff on the go. The, the, the town hall is so big a project. I mean, it's huge. Um, we've got the complication that we neighbour the Sunnyside Developments and, and you know, and that, that's on hold. That's probably not gonna restart now until March. Um, so hopefully we can get our work done before then, but we share access to it. You know, it, it, it's, it's a really complex. I, I can't see much past the, the, the town hall projects as far as big projects go. You know, we'll get the nice stuff then. We'll do our town centre business awards, I'm sure in April. Um, and, and yeah, it, it's amazing how quickly that time's gonna come around, mind.
Yes, it, it will go quickly, very quickly because it was only about this time, five years ago. Is that you decided to set up Bridgend Town Lights, which became Bridgend County.
Yeah, um, the town alliance probably started quietly around March of two thousand and seventeen. Kind of in the background. Change, change for Bridgend, change for Bridgend was launched on the first of November two thousand and sixteen.
Yeah.
Um, and then, I mean, you know, I'm biased, but what we achieved in six months was just phenomenal, you know. We, we, we got three B C B C councillors elected. We got people, good people like yourself elected to a number of different councils. I mean, you, you did sit on two or three. I can't remember now.
At, at one point, it, it started off at two, um, St Bride's Minor and Coity Higher.
Yeah.
Um, I was then on to Anna Saldra, but personal problems and time. I had to drop Anna Saldra and St Bride's Minor.
Yeah.
Um, and since then I've been on Coity only, um, but.
But people underestimate it, mind. I mean, you say you're on three councils, you were on three councils. That's a lot of work. If, if you're wanting to do the job properly, and I know you did, that's a lot of work. Because the responsibilities put on you as a councillor are quite large.
Yeah, I, I think at the time I didn't really understand the amount of work it involved. I was a full-time carer for my father at the time. Um, that took up a lot of my time and I thought, well, I'll intersperse this, what I do. But it was taking up more and more of what I could do. Um, I didn't wanna drop Anna Saldra. My father had just passed away. At that point, and I couldn't put my focus into that. Uh, I was actually chair of the.
Yeah, you were. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
At that point, and it wasn't fair on the community, it wasn't fair on me. There were other people out there who could do the job at the time. I dropped, um, I stepped down from St Bride's Minor because I couldn't do the job as well. I had, I was lucky that I had great backup and a great group of people, not just independents. But the Labour people and the, and Anita Davis on Coity Higher that could pick up. The slack that I was dropping at that point.
Anita's amazing. I love Anita. She's brilliant.
She, she, she is an amazing person with.
Person, absolutely. And a great community person as well.
Yeah, not just the co- community council work, but her proper work in that and the things she does. And I think.
Yeah.
Inspiration to a lot of people and.
Yes.
As, as she should be. And she's been.
Yeah.
Uh, received awards for the work she does as she should be because.
Yeah.
Thing. And I hope one day that I will get to speak to her on here. I talked to her a lot on community council and that.
Yeah.
But I've just had Martin on, so I don't really wanna go back to Coity just yet.
Well, that, that, that what you're doing is good because third tier community councils. And until Hanford Parish Council, a lot of people wouldn't even know what they were.
No.
And, and they can do a lot of good within communities and, and it's important for community councils to engage with the public. And, and this is a channel that you allow them to do it. So keep going. It's, I'm enjoying them.
I, I, I do think community councils, when they work. When they really work, and we've had some that don't work, and not everyone does work, I'll say that. But when they do work, they are excellent value for money. Very, very good value for money.
That comes back to my initial point about what you asked about Bridgend Town Council. That's that. If we hadn't employed those thirty members of staff, we could have hit the same problems. There is a great misunderstanding of what, what, what responsibilities are coming.
Yeah.
To community councils and they have to prepare themselves for it because that isn't going away. And they're, they're, my personal opinion, I, I believe community councils need more staff. The problem with that is that it needs funding, which means precept goes up, which isn't popular. But that is something that has, does have to happen and that there are serious considerations that have to happen around that.
Well, I think it's been, what, the last four years that community councils are taking on more responsibility, not just with. Putting up, and people say, oh, you put up flower pots, you put up Christmas decorations. We don't just do that. We're taking over community assets.
Yeah.
In Coity Higher, we've done four renovations of public parks in the last four years.
I love what you guys are doing with parks. I think it's brilliant.
We're trying to do more. We've had complications where we've had an offer to take over. Litchard Plainfield and Litchard Community Centre. Okay, the offer wasn't great. We're still discussing it. We're gonna look at it in more detail. As we should do because we don't wanna be lumbered with something that's gonna drain resources over.
Absolutely. Well, the deal has to be right for the residents. Either it's them, the foots the bail.
Yes, and we were offered Great Western Avenue Fields in Penrindray, but we were only offered five years on that. Which we can't really do anything in five years, so that was a non-starter, but that's.
He's a Wild Mill boy. That's the back fields. Don't call them Great Western Avenue. That's the back fields. I don't know why they're called the back fields anyway.
Oh, the back of Wild Mill.
Well, I suppose, but I won't even tell you how we got there because it wasn't on all the pathway.
Um, guessing the railway line?
Yeah, it wasn't used then. No, don't worry about that.
Um, yeah, we talked about good work and the things you got. Another thing that I believe it was the town council recently, the defibrillator in New Bridgefields.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's been part of a programme.
Yeah.
Uh, that, I mean, we, oh, that would have been two thousand and eighteen, the first lot went up. Um, it's, it's, it's really on, on the agenda at the minute with all of the very high profile situations and a lot of community clubs have lost. Sports people, um, through it. I mean, the, the Christian Eric someone is the, the high profile one and everyone was shocked by that. Uh, but I think there's been three deaths since then in South Wales of, of local amateur, not local to here.
No, but there was a rugby player, I think it was just two weeks.
Cricketer down in Sully, I think. Um, it, it's a concern and. And again, that's where community councils can take the lead on something. I mean, there's been, there's now this public, is it a half a million pounds from central government? That people can apply for. Um, that, that'll go in a heartbeat because these things are two grand each, you know, they're, they're, they're not cheap. But the, the town councils put quite a few up in the town centre. Um, Newbridge Fields was a, a black spot, uh, kind of area that wasn't in. There was one in Halo, but that's. You know, the, the stats about ten percent for every minute and everything else. Newbridge Fields is a big old place. Um, so yeah, um, the, the, the town council resolved to work with the cricket club, um, to put one up there and it was fantastic. And let's hope it's never used. Let's, let's hope that thing sits there and it's the worst value two thousand pounds the council's ever spent. Let's hope it's never used, but it's there.
Yeah, uh, I think there was one in, we, we put quite a few throughout Coity Higher over the last four years. And I think, I think it was the year before last, one was unfortunately actually used, but. That's what they're there for. We hope they're never used and that is money we're happy to waste if they're never used. I think, I know it's a bad way to say it, but.
No, 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 but it's the prob, probably the only thing we ever hope we waste money on.
Yeah.
You know, but that's the reality of it. And, and one of ours, I think the one that we put at the bottom of Wyndham Street may have been damaged by an idiot. Um, but the majority, I think all of the other ones that we've put in are still there. Um, but no, I, I think they're, they're such an important thing. And, and, and part of what community councils can take the lead on.
Yes, ver- very much.
Again, it's, it's not our money, it's the public's money. And, and, and there are aspects as well of the guidance from One Voice Wales. And this is where you and I can get really nerdy because a lot of people won't even know what One Voice Wales is. But One Voice Wales wants Bridgend Town and Coity Higher to work together.
Yeah.
So, so when there's one, you know, our boundary is shared on Coity Road where the A T S is.
Yes.
You know, perhaps councils should be working together to, to joint fund one. So the residents from both sides of the imaginary border are contributing towards it.
Yeah, because people don't see a border and say, oh, that's on Coity Higher side. I can't use it because I, I live just the opposite side of that line.
Things like that only matter to people like you and I and people in the Boundary Commission.
Yeah.
Third tier councils should be working together better, more effectively, more, more, more often. For the benefit of all of our residents.
Especially when they neighbour, when they neighbour each other. Over a field is a different matter where if there's a big, big common. Like we do have partway up in Coity Higher and between Brinkethin and so St Bride's Minor Community Council. It's a massive common. There are issues that we have shared in common, like Heel Spencer, the road there, the bridge over the M four motorway. They are shared interests and we need to work together better. Um, but it's like our, it's. Still part of the same street. You've got houses next to each other.
Absolutely, yeah.
In two different wards.
Yeah, I mean, a, a perfect example, and this might not mean anything to anybody else other than me. But Bridgend Town Council, we employ a member of staff. Part of his duties is to pick up dog mess from around the Bridgend Town. Now, Newcastle Higher wants to have the same person to do the same job, but Newcastle Higher, it would be unreasonable for them to employ a person to do that area. So they pay us for our member of staff to go into Newcastle Higher to pick up the dog waste there. That works on every level because it's Newcastle Higher Community Council offering a service to their residents that they couldn't do if they weren't working with us. It offers an income for Bridgend Town Council which serves our residents because the person that we're employing isn't just offering a service, but it's actually revenue generating. Which pays for other things. And we all have to do that and forget political divides. That they're, they, they're not important. We've got to get rid of the council divide. Oh, that's in their area. They have to do that. And, and this comes up a lot on Bridgend Town Council because, you know, we get, um, we get a lot of grant fund applications. And a lot of the visible, um, clubs or groups are based in the Bridgend Town. So just as an example, Bridgend Athletic Club, and it may not just be the athletic club. But they would apply to their local community council for a grant. Well, that's Bridgend Town Council. But people travel from Broadlands and Coity and Brackler to use the club.
Yeah.
So should residents of Bridgend Town fund that thing that's in their area for other re. And that's a strange kind of complex opinion piece because you'll have some councils who believe it should. You have some councils who believe they shouldn't. And that's where councils come together to form a majority view and that's how you move forward. But if councils can work closer together and more in link, then that becomes less of a problem. And that's something I hope. That's generational though. That's not one term. You're not gonna sort that out in a term. That, that's about twenty years of thinking of how this tier of government works together.
What services can we lessen the burden on each other by sharing, by working together on? And the defibrillator would be the perfect start in a way to get councils working together. When they're so close in communities like that.
Cause, cause here's the question. Let's use that as the example. So we've got Coity Road. Let, let, let's say for argument's sake, we wanted to put. A defibrillator on the A T S building. Who should pay for that? Doesn't really matter. It should go, but, 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 but why would that be a consideration? Why are we even discussing who should pay for it? It should just be paid for and, and politicians and councillors should just work together for the good of the, the community and get it done. Now, there's an opportunity there for two councils to work together. Now, in the future, because it, it's, it is too difficult at the minute. Because the community council got their own problems. A lot of them are very high profile ones and I'm thankful that Coity and Bridgend aren't two of those, to be fair. But that, that should almost be second nature. That, as you say, where boundaries exist, that they should be working together.
Yeah.
Collaborative working.
Well, yeah, not only that, it would reduce the cost of these, a lot of these services. Where we can share the costs and it reduces. So we can do more within the community with the budgets we have. They're not.
See, I've, I've, I've lost out here. If I was councillor Spiller, I could do something, get some slides up to show you and I could press something here and.
Yeah, I, I, I did say la- last, uh, in a post last week that people need to start up in their game.
No, no chance with me. You're back down to base with me.
Anyway, we, I think that's really interesting and we've talked a lot about the community council now. We're gonna move on to something else. But before we do, uh, I'm gonna promote a group that both you and I part of. They've not paid me in any way for this promotion. I approached them yesterday and they said, we would. And it's, if I can share my screen without me. Tell me if it's up when I, can you see it?
Oh, you're sharing, you, you're gonna embarrass me now and share your screen.
Oh, you could, yeah, so can you see it?
I can see it, yes.
That's great. Lads and Dads, it's a brilliant organisation, both yourself and I and a lot of people. Through this, it's a men's health and wellbeing Facebook page and support group. As men, we are quite obstinate and we don't really share our feelings or how we feel or what's, think. We don't, but this is a great group because I've seen, I've posted on there myself and had people messaging me. Not on, uh, commenting on the post and direct messaging me, are you all right today? Do you need to talk about anything? As men, we don't do it often, do we? We, we, we quite often shy away from our feelings when it comes to mental health and we shouldn't. I suffer from anxiety and depression and I'm, one in four people in the UK do. And I think that would be even more now after the pandemic. So don't think it's one in four women or children or anything like that. Men do. And unfortunately, men seem to take it harder and. Without the support that they need sometimes, ends in the wrong situation. Uh, unfortunately, we've seen recently. But this is a great, fantastic site for any men. Or even young men as well, because they're not immune to the problems that the rest of us are. Join the site and get the support. But it's a private site for men only, I'm, I'm afraid. Sometimes us men need to talk to just other, other men and support because we know what each other's going through. And there are, there are amazingly other support groups out there for depression, for anything, for new mothers. For, for everything. And if you need help, do not be afraid to talk to somebody. Please talk to someone. Or we're all here for you. Unlike Ian, I can see the stop share button. And so we're back.
Well, I mean, that, I mean, it's, 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 I, I've been part of the group from the outset. I mean, when, literally when there was ten members. And I, and I, I read, I don't post much or I don't try and help other people, but the support in there is fantastic. And if there's any, any blokes out there, just search on Facebook, Lads and Dads. Um, and, and just become, you'll, you'll find new friends, you'll make friends for life in there. Uh, a friend of mine, no names, no information, but he was struggling a bit. I recommended him into the group and he's a new man. Um, you know, these guys, they go walking up Pennavane, they go cold water dipping down Porthcolll, they have. You have barbecues, football teams. It's amazing. Rob, Alan, Dave, they're doing a fantastic job. And we both found Dave yesterday. That's a little in joke that unless you're on there, you won't get.
Um, just your photography, you'll know David Bailey.
Yeah. And I got. The photo was fine. I'll send you another copy. It was a good, it must have compressed when I sent it.
I, I did, somebody did comment, well, it started by computer or something. I said, no. I did, somebody did comment, well, it started my computer or something, I said, no.
It was pixelated, yeah.
His cameras, I crack them, so this new amazing technology is stopping from cracking.
But any blokes out there at all, just on Facebook, just search for Lads and Dads. Just sit there and don't feel obliged to post, just read, just feel part of a community that's doing amazing work.
Yeah, you're not alone. Nobody is alone. There's always somebody around to help, not just men, women, children, anybody. Anyway, we spoke about this a little bit at the beginning. I'm probably going to go into my rant now, if that's okay with you.
Well, I've had an hour of ranting, feel free.
Right.
And get it off your chest as well because look, I'll say this now, you're a good person. You've stood up as a community councillor for good reasons, so you deserve the ability to rant here.
Right, I don't mind, since I've started this political page, I have had private messages come through from different people, aren't they? It's basically, oh, you're just a front for BCI, this is all you want to promote. No, it's not and that's not what this page is about. The page is about promoting a lot of the good work, especially community councils do. And that's why I talk to councils. I've tried to get people from all the different political parties. I spoke to Ian Spiller on the weekend, who is a Liberal Democrat, registered member. I will happily speak to anybody, Conservative, Labour, Plaid Cymru, Propel, Tim Thomas is Propel and he's agreed to do a thing as well. I'll speak to anybody and I don't mind people attacking me. You can attack me, I don't care. Yes, you're fat, you're ugly, you're ill informed, you're a bad father, you're bad this, bad that, whatever. It doesn't bother me because that's me, it's personal me. Yesterday I received a message aimed at my son. And this has got, gets me angry. Normally if I get angry, I blow up and that's it, I'm done. But this has been a whole day now and I'm still angry now. Unfortunately, the message was, no wonder your son has autism because you're so thick. Okay, it's not the worst message in the world, but to me that steps in line. And I don't want to talk about toxic politics. I have to with Martin and I have to with you because both you and Martin have been heavily accused of toxic politics. But this is my rant at the moment, this is me. Attack me all you want, come at me all you want, say what you want, I don't care about me. Leave my family out of it, that is not politics. As a YouTuber who was a lawyer in Canada says, politics ruins everything. And I think that is right. Toxic politics is not coming from one side only. It doesn't come just from BCI, it doesn't come from Labour, just Labour. It comes from every area of the community, Lib Dems, Conservatives, whatever. There are people out there who will criticise and attack you regardless, no matter what. Sorry, my son's just walking past again.
His ears were burning.
I thought he was going in the kitchen, he obviously went outside to play for a bit, but there we go. So, yeah, and it was a throwaway account from somebody, it was a private message. Clicked on it, looked at the message and that was there, no wonder your son has autism because you're so thick. I clicked on the link and the account had been deleted. I have messaged it, sent it to Facebook as, whatever, what they do about it so far. I don't think it falls in the harassment stage at this time because it was just one message at that point. As I say, attack me, I don't mind. It doesn't, I guess it does bother me in a way, it won't bother anybody. But I'm the one who stuck my head above the parapet. I've stood as a councillor, I've started this page, it's not a BCI page. Yes, I talked to Steve, yes, I've talked to Martin. And I agree with a lot of what we do as independent councillors and that. But I don't agree with everything. Stephen is a great proponent of reintroducing traffic into Bridgend Town Centre. Me, I'm not, I don't see the sense in it. I do for disabled people, for disabled parking, I understand that, but not as a thoroughfare for traffic to go through. So we differ on opinions and there are other things we differ on. I respect anybody who stands as a councillor, who puts their head above that water. And I said that 40 years ago in a post when I was standing for elections, when at the time I was having a little argument with Ryan Clappworthy up in Pontychamme. And I think, yes, we can criticise policies and oppose policies and things like that. That's not toxic politics, which I was informed is toxic politics when you oppose what the council's doing. No, that's just opposition.
Where did that line come from?
I don't want to say it was somebody asked to, for an interview because I'm BCI, fair enough. I don't care if you don't want to be interviewed because I'm BCI and you think I'm just going to attack. That's not what this platform is for.
That's not really you though, from the Luke I know.
No, I don't, I do get annoyed sometimes and I have defended yourself on Facebook. I've seen people attack you and your family for no reason, bar they don't like you, which is fair enough. You don't have to be liked by everybody, not everybody will.
No.
But to me, toxic politics, you can criticise Steve for what he does or how he goes about it and things like that. The ideas that he has, you can criticise that, fine. But if you criticise family, you're out of line. If you criticise anybody's gender or their sexual orientation or the religion or the race or anything like that, you've got no business in having any comment. Criticise by all means policies that we put forward as we did before the last election. You did 13 days of different policy each day.
We did, yeah, 50 policies, yeah.
And that criticises policies, that's what they're there for. Because we may not see a fatal flaw in those policies that somebody else can spot. Then we can adjust and that's what politics is all about. Look at the policies if you see a fatal flaw, this is what's wrong with it. Let's talk, let's see what we can do. So we're going to talk about toxic politics, what has been deemed toxic politics. And everybody seems to think it's a new term and it's just recently started, but we both know that's wrong. The other day you advised me to watch this fantastic documentary and advise anybody to watch it. It's called Tory Boy. I'm not a Conservative by any means. If you want to know, I've only ever voted for a party once and that was Labour in 1997. The first time I actually voted, it was Labour, I was caught up in the things.
Yeah.
And I form my own opinions. I take what other people say, whether from any party, from anything like that, from what Steve says, from what Martin says, from what other councillors say. And I form my own opinions. Steve doesn't dictate to me, Martin doesn't dictate to me. Nobody else in BCI dictates to what I want to do and what I think. We support each other.
Our role as BCI was only ever to get you elected, that was it.
Yeah.
And to offer support after you're elected for situations like you've just described. And obviously, it only happened yesterday, you only told me about it today. So, but we've had to support councillors who've had that, you know. I am one of the more high profile, well, Martin's probably one of the more high profile councillors and we do attract more attention. Yeah, it's, but you'll never, there was one very high profile case during my Senate election. I know you do want to talk about the Senate campaign and I'm happy to and I'm aware of the time. And, you know, that ended up in the police. But I don't often talk about the abuse that I and my family do get. And this whole, this whole, and I saw something that, and it makes me laugh. I mean, BCI, what is BCI? Well, we haven't had time to go into what BCI is. We've been called right wing nutters, yesterday we were called left wing lunatics. Recently I've said that politics in Bridgend was fine until you lot arrived and you've just made it horrible. Well, you know, you've referenced Tory Boy, which is a great, it's a brilliant documentary because you've got this, this young guy from London who sets out to make one film and ends up making something completely different because of the journey that he goes on. This whole thing of toxic politics, whatever you want to call it, isn't, isn't, I don't think, first of all, I don't think it's accurate. You know, the stuff I go through, and I'm with you, come at me, don't go at my family, that's different. And that's why that situation ended up with the police because it affected my family. You know, I've had, I've had fake reviews from Labour councillors for my shop. Google, I've had people reporting me falsely to environmental health and stuff that didn't happen. I've been called a Nazi, I've been told, I was told during my Senate campaign that I'd stated to somebody that I didn't care if blind people got run over in my thing about opening up Bridgend Town Centre. I've been accused of being investigated for homophobic hate crime. I've been accused of being investigated for a race hate crime. I've, it's everything and it's not exclusive to me. We supported a candidate in a Brackler by-election, I mean, a Brackler by-election that had 15% turnout. I had to go to a police station with a candidate who had an opponent turn up on his doorstep, on his driveway and threaten to punch him. You know, don't, politics attracts strong willed, opinionated people. And then we put them into this cauldron where we expect them to interact. And yes, they should always interact respectfully. And going back to the very first name you mentioned on this, Lee Robson. Lee Robson once said to me, if you can't win a Facebook argument in three comments, switch off. How right he was because when I stood for election in 2017, I was convinced I could change somebody's opinion by using my phone and a social media platform. If somebody holds a different opinion to me, using Facebook is not going to change their mind.
No.
Opinions are important and what's the name of the Manick Street preachers? This is my, this is my truth, tell me yours. That's very true because you look at something like the Cardiff Capital Regional Deal. There are elected councillors within our area who believe that's a good deal for Bridgend. I and other people I know don't believe it's a good deal for Bridgend. And that's perfectly fine. Now, those two parties are not going to sort out their differences on Facebook. They're not going to sort it out on Twitter. So why do people bother trying to? BCI put out information back posts about the Cardiff Capital Regional Deal, they do scrutiny, they do that. But what the group has to be careful of is that it doesn't then get embroiled in subsequent arguments because you can't, you can't change somebody's opinion. You can only do that through democratic process. And I'm sure that'll be a big thing in May now, you know, when that comes up.
Yeah.
I'm sure it'll be a policy point for lots of people who are standing for election. But, I mean, you mentioned Tory Boy, you know, there's a scene in there where there's an independent candidate in Middlesbrough, isn't it? Middlesbrough, I can't remember which Middlesbrough.
It's Middlesbrough, but I know the scene you're on about with Sir Stuart Bell, where he walks past.
Yeah, and they intimidate an independent woman.
I think there was something even more chilling than that earlier in with somebody who was a Conservative councillor on the council for years.
Yeah, I'd forgotten about that.
And when they put up people's rent by 30 pence, I think she was saying this was the 70s. She had just lost her son and her husband, they both just passed away. Labour councillor, I'm not saying it's just Labour, every party, there are people in every party who'll do this. Even independents, there are people around who do this. But because it was the focus, it wasn't going to be the main focus, but this is what he discovered.
It changed, didn't it?
They marched a coffin into the town, a black coffin into the town square.
With his name on it.
With his name on it to protest against the 30 pence rights.
In front of her?
Yeah.
Weeks after he died and months after they'd lost their son.
Yeah, and it wasn't just that, it wasn't just it was Labour activists or anything like that. It was the chair of the local Labour Society, Labour Union or whatever it was.
The group, yeah.
Yeah, and that's a chair. And then we see what Sir Stuart Bell, watching his people plaster this woman's windows with.
His boards.
With his posters and things like that. And she got it all caught on camera and everything and.
And then supplied it to the council and had her CCTV removed.
Yeah, yeah, they removed the CCTV because of it.
But this is the thing, Luke, and that isn't just in isolation. I mean, that film was made with, I think he went in with one kind of idea. He wanted to show the Tories up, to be fair, and then he got on the ground and it just became something else.
He was, his family, his family and him were Labour members, they were staunch Labour for years. And he got disillusioned with Gordon Brown and that, so he thought,
Yes.
As a documentary, I'll see how hard it is to stand to be an MP for a party.
As a joke.
As a joke, as to see the documentary, and he got picked for Middlesbrough.
On his first attempt.
On his first attempt. I've got to admit, the Tories did him over quite a bit in that messing up his pamphlet.
Oh, his leaflets and everything.
And getting him to actually campaign for somebody in a district next to his.
But you and I know that's reality, you know, target seats. And I mean, he only got selected for Middlesbrough because they knew he didn't stand a chance, let's be honest.
But the biggest thing that took away from that, not beyond the despicable things that were done to the ladies in that, and they were both ladies, the independent councillor and the other woman who marched coffin was, the fact that Sir Stuart Bell had been an MP for Middlesbrough since 1983.
Yeah.
Hadn't done, held a surgery for 15 years, didn't even have a constituency office.
Office, didn't have a phone.
Didn't have a phone because they tried ringing him every day and then reporters tried ringing him for 100 days and never anybody got through.
Employed his son who went to jail.
He employed his son who stole from other MPs, tried to commit fraud with cheques and stole other things from the Houses of Parliament and he got sent to jail for six months, which I think was very, very lucky. He employed his wife as the office manager for his constituency office that he didn't have.
She lived in Paris.
And he didn't have constituency office. And all this got back to Labour and it was Ed Miliband at the time, straight after the general election. And the statement was, the chief whip has given him a stern talking to.
Yeah, exactly.
And I thought, is that all? He hasn't done.
But I'm trying to remember what year this was now, this was when Cameron won, wasn't it? So this, this whole thing of toxic politics only being around since BCI, I mean, let's go back 20 years.
With a float, with a video that's floating around now of Wales this week.
On YouTube.
Jeff Jones with Island Farm, which we mentioned earlier.
And any of you watchers, go onto YouTube, the easiest way to find it is Brett Exton, who is the fantastic gentleman who does the work at Hut9, we're back there again. And it will bring up a recommendation of a week in, week out report in relation to the original proposals to build on Island Farm. Now, I think you said you saw it at the time and you watched it again a couple of weeks ago. Listen to the first hand evidence of two people in that. Forget, no, don't forget the Island Farm thing, but in relation to this toxic politics that I get accused of, which I would dispute and I'm happy to talk to anybody. Look at the Labour guy who was moved aside, who'd served Labour in the community for.
In my stack.
In my stack, who got moved aside so that Jeff Jones could get the seat. And listen to the recollections of the independent candidate who's in there, who gets bullied in the chamber. Listen to what Peter Foley was saying in that. Politics, don't forget the word toxic, it's rough and it's tumble. It's not pleasant and what you've experienced in the last 24 hours is unacceptable. It's rough and it's tumble and it is difficult. But every line of our society is, I mean, I watched something from the House of Commons the other day with a lady from Love Island, is that a thing? Who was receiving, sorry, I've stuck my cable against.
Receiving death threats from a 13 year old.
Because of the way she looks, I mean, that's nothing to do with.
Year old as well.
Yeah, and do you know what? It's a societal thing, you know, I read forums, I don't, I don't comment on them as much as I used to. But I'm told that as a councillor, I need to take criticism online, but I can't answer back. How does that work? You know, I need to sit there and have stupid things said about me and thrown up about me and mistruth said about me, but I'm not allowed to respond. You know, a councillor should listen to all of this criticism because they're elected by the people, so they have to listen to the people. And regardless of whether you agree with them, you have to listen to them. But the second that you respond with a different point of view, then you're a councillor and you should know better. And I'm not saying that's right or wrong. What I'm saying is the delicate balance of being, we're all people, Luke, we all have feelings and what's happened to you has hurt you. And if that had come from somebody who was brave enough to actually tell you who they are rather than hiding behind a fake profile, then I'm sure you would have naturally, as a father, instinctively gone, who are you? What are you doing? Why are you saying this? I've currently got, I think it's two or three fake profiles on Facebook that troll me on a daily basis. You know, there was something, I shared, I shared a BBC news story about the rise of the independent councillor. Well, of course I'm going to share that, it's something I'm really passionate about. Some fake profile goes on, they said, yeah, but there's no independent centre members, are there? Or when I, you know, when. Or or when I, you know, went with the 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 outcome of the senate elections, I lost my job, you know, I worked for a senate member. People don't like him, I didn't care for it, for for a lot of things he said. But I worked for Neil McEvoy, well, because I didn't get elected, because Neil didn't get elected, I lost my job. So I went on to Facebook, you know, I'm quite a high-profile person, I'm looking for a job. You know, some bright spark who I've never met before comes on, I hear Sarah Murphy's hiring, winky face. But we're meant to just sit there and just say, oh, yeah. Top trolling. It does affect us, we are people. More importantly, it affects our family.
Oh, yeah.
It it, you know, it it used to affect me more, my mum passed away just over three years ago, it used to affect me when my mum used to read it because it upset her. But, you know, let's, let's not pretend that this this accusation of toxic politics has arisen because some group of independents are formalized and they stand together. What we do as BCI, Luke, is we stand up for people like you. You know, we stand up for people like Michelle, we stand up for people like Ian, we stand up for people like Chris. It's rough and it's tumble. And does it overstep the mark? On every way, yes, it does. I don't partake in it. Am I guilty of reacting in a bad way five years ago when I thought I could change people's minds on Facebook? Probably. Did I tell, did I honestly tell somebody that I didn't care if blind people got run over? Absolutely no, I didn't. The old me would have gone in and charged in with my thumbs typing just block the person because their opinion of me doesn't matter, it's not important, they didn't even live in the area, they can't vote for me, they just it it it's not a BCI invention, it's not an independent councillor thing, it's been around in politi- You've mentioned Tony Blair.
Yeah.
Alistair Campbell was a saint, wasn't he?
Oh, lovely.
It's it it's not specific to a party, it's not specific to a movement, it's not specific to anything at all. Politics is a rough and tumble game. It's not pleasant.
No.
And and I'd like to see it less rough and tumble because I honestly believe we'd have more women in there if it was less rough and tumble.
Oh, gotcha.
And and and, you know, there, I speak to people in the ward I'm elected to represent to empower them to stand next May and they won't because of what politics is like.
Oh, yes.
And honestly, go back and watch the week-in, week-out with, with, search Brett Exton, go and watch Tory Boy. Go and see what the reality of people like Luke and I'm not gonna, I deal with my own issues, but good people like Luke who stand up, who set up a Facebook group to try and get other people involved in third-tier polit- Luke, nobody ever tries to try and get people into third-tier politics, I applaud you for what you're doing.
It it's not just getting them in, it's I I I understand that people don't wanna stand because you face a lot of criticism for the slightest little thing. And a lot of people can't take that and I I don't think, I respect anybody who stands. Anybody, because they're gonna face something at some point. They they're not gonna be immune forever. But the group was set up to more inform the public that not sure what us as councillors do or what we're allowed to do or how far we can go, not just county councils, but more of fa- community councils, because a lot of community councils do fantastic, amazing work and that never gets praised enough on social media.
Until Hanford Parish Council kicks off and then BBC News wanna know about it, but that's not a reality.
But it it it's it's the same with I'll I'll say, my stack and Porthcawl, Porthcawl Town Councils, they've had problems over the last couple of years, my stack and Porthcawl more recently, and my stack again, something more recently. And that seems to get more attention than the good work of putting a defibrillator up or putting on these wartime Bridgend things. Or making communities feel better, be more prideful about communities, like Ian Spiller was saying on the weekend, that it's about bringing pride to your community and making it feel like a home, like a community, rather than somewhere where we live in.
Owen Donovan, you mentioned Augie Blogger earlier, did a fantastic piece on the, on the, the, the future of community councils and what community councils have to remember is they're given an amazing opportunity to do good in their community. And they're one process away from being wound up. You know, it's not, it's not, it's not difficult to get rid of a community council. And if you annoy too many of your residents, you're gone. Don't ever waste that opportunity. Third-tier councils have been undervalued for for generations, they can achieve so much within the community and it's so important.
And we spoke about One Voice Wales earlier and One Voice Wales its ethos is that every community needs a community council because of the work that county councils don't actually do, it's not just think, sometimes it is the aesthetic with um flower tubs making things, even even in Coity, we put up actuated speed signs
Yeah.
For people who were speeding, because council wouldn't, county council wouldn't do it, so we paid for it, we've had them installed. And you think, people might think, well, they're not that great, they're just flashering people. Even if we get a few people just slowing down, it could be a few people at that right moment when it's needed.
As as mayor of Bridgend Town, I had to finalize our insurance policy, which renewed yesterday, so that will happen on Tuesday and Wednesday. We insure one point, over one point two million pounds of fixed assets on behalf of the people of Bridgend, one point two million pounds worth of assets. Before you get into the 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 kind of small stuff, just think about that, one point two million of of public assets on the public's behalf. That's the good that Bridgend Town Council's doing in our, in our community, could it do more? It may do more. I mean, again, Owen's piece says about Barry, which I think has forty members of staff.
It's the largest town council in Wales, isn't it?
Yes, fifty thousand people, I think Bridgend has got fifteen thousand, so, you know, pro rata, we're, we're, we're with them on the kind of members of staff per resident. Um but there's, there's, there's more that can be done, it needs the right people, it it needs people in there who wants to get stuff done. And stagnating community councils are so frustrating because they can achieve such good in their community and and they are across our borough as well.
Yeah, I I I feel sorry for some community councils because I think um Merthwaite is very small, so it has a very, very small budget.
Gonna get very big soon.
Yes. It has a very small budget of what it can do and it's, is it Coit Church as well?
Coit Church is quite small as well, Coit Church's lower, I think.
Lower, they have, so they don't have the funds to do as much as they would love to do, but they do good work with the money they have.
I mean, the thing is, I mean, I'm, I'm, I don't know the details, but but what do the residents want? Do they want a community council that charges them thirty pounds a year and does very little, or do they want a community council that charges a hundred pounds a year and does a lot? That's for the residents to decide and they do that through the ballot box and that's, that's through democratic process. The five years I will have served, I'm, I can look back on extreme pride, whatever happens, I'm gonna be seeking reelection, it's not within my power. But the five years I've served, I'm extortionately proud of, to have been part of a group of councillors that wanted to get stuff done and and put up the precept twice, but future-proofed the council for what's coming, and I'm really proud of that.
Well, as you should be and as every person who serves on Bridgend Town Council should be, they've done a lot of good work. And I I I'm not just saying it's the independents have done it, you've got Labour on there as well and they've done good work.
Conservative as well, yeah.
Conservative as well. Say, on Coity High, we have Labour and Lib Dem and they've done fantastic work and I respect, respect each and every one of them.
It's interesting what you say there, because I, I've gone into our chamber on on certain things and I voted in a certain way. Independents within our chamber have voted in a different way to me and I've been on the wrong side of the result and I haven't, that's when I've been my happiest.
Oh, yeah, because that's
Because that's, that's everything I believe in. Forget the fact that the vote didn't go my way, the thing that I fundamentally believe in as a person elected is that majority carries.
Yeah.
And 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 that that's how it has to be.
And ev- every person who has a vote should be voting their conscience, not what they're told to. And I think there's been an argument recently on Facebook with the great motion that councillor Peniel Thomas put forward the other day. And there's been arguments and that and four councillors voted against the motion. And unfortunately, there were four councillors from the same
All the Conservatives, absolutely, yeah.
Same party. It, if anybody doesn't know, it was to do with the low means testing or, or means testing of free school meals in Bridgend. Schools or schools in Wales because it's controlled by the Welsh Government.
It was a fantastic motion as well, well researched, well put forward, well worded, good motion.
Yeah, and also to put a motion against the twenty pound uplift that's coming.
Yeah.
And go, I'm somebody who's on universal credit and I get this twenty-pound uplift. Um it's been a blessing during the pandemic when my son was living with me basically during that time because he couldn't go back and forth all the time, there was limits on what he could, we could and couldn't do, it was blessing, still, still want enough because for some reason my son eats like a horse. So, which made it difficult and there were times where we were living on cereal, plain pasta or peanut butter sandwiches. It just
And that's the reality that Ross is addressing, forget politics, Ross was working for his constituents at that time in their best interests. And thankfully it didn't get in the way, but this is what annoys me. Well, if we use that motion as an example, but let's also talk about the council, the council tax, three point nine percent council tax. Are you honestly telling me that every single Labour member who voted for that, that's what they honestly thought?
Well, that's what they were, they believed.
That's what they were told to do.
A- as the audit that has come out this week, did they know all the facts? That is the other
Yeah, exactly, exactly. But then you you look at the block voting annoys me and it offends me. There must, there has to have been people in those meetings that voiced a different opinion. Yet they're told to go in. Before the, before the two thousand seventeen election, I went up to a community council somewhere in the valleys and I won't name them. But there was a majority group there. Don't have to be a rocket science, we're in the valleys, there was a majority group there, okay? They held a motion. They forgot to take the vote because they'd agreed it in a pre-meeting meeting, so they knew what they were voting for and they forgot to go through the motion of voting.
Yeah.
They looked up, saw me in the public gallery, went, oh, hang on, no, hang on, we gotta do that. That should never be allowed and, all right, nobody ever knows and if I wasn't in the public gallery, nobody would have been in the public gallery.
No.
But councillors, any elected person, councillor, MS, MP, whoever you are, you should be free to vote on behalf of your residents and your conscience, nothing else.
Yeah.
That's it, that's fundamentally what I agree with, I've been approached to it. I've been approached to join every major political party there is. I will never vote uh join because that would be taken away from me.
Yeah.
And we're, we're, we're seeing it evidenced in front of our eyes every time.
Yeah, and I I think my comments now could hinder getting an interview with councillor Tom Gifford, who originally
I don't think he will, I think he'd be big enough to come on.
I I hope he is because I I it's, I not go, go to, I don't attack people on here. We talk about things where we talk about annoyances on a uh with other things, yeah, fine, fair enough, but the main purpose, as I said, is gaining an understanding of what people actually do.
Yeah.
Uh which a lot of people don't have, have a clue, we see it on forums all the time, well, this is what you the coun- the county council should, should be doing or the community council. No, community council can't do that, that's county's responsibility and vice versa, vice versa. So I think more information for people, the more informed they can be to make a complete choice when it comes time to vote. Um because they're more informed, they're more, maybe more likely to vote. Because historically, especially on community councils, the voter now is historically low. Very low. But I can't sit here and think those four conservative councillors honestly believed personally that doing, forget the uplift part because I think, I think that's a national thing, that's fair enough, community councils don't get involved with that, yes, put your motions and write to the Parliament, fair enough, but we live in Wales, the Welsh Assembly Government deal with free school meals. That's what the main point of this motion was. And councillor Peniel Thomas wrote it extremely well, extremely well researched and thought out. I can't see how any one of them four councillors, yes, they may have a personal opinion but when it comes to a group of the same party that not one of them thought yes, we need to raise the level of fruit, the cost of free school meals in line with what England, Scotland, Northern Ireland have, because Wales has one of the lowest.
Unless credit the local Labour group for criticizing the Welsh Labour administration and Welsh government.
Yes, well done to them.
Let's congratulate them and credit them for doing that, that's a surprise. That's great. But but on the flip side, there must have been Labour councillors who thought that they didn't wanna vote for it. So they should be free to vote the other way with the Conservatives, but it's just
I I I will congratulate any councillor who stands up to do what's best what they feel is best for the constituency, not their party. Last week
Well, let's, let's not forget why Ross is actually an independent now, because that's exactly what he did six years ago.
I spoke to E- Ian about that last week and I spoke about
Yeah.
Mayor Spanswick, who stood up for Save the Fields.
Absolutely.
Which was
Which was a brave thing to do.
Brave thing to do, unfortunately, he wasn't there for the vote because he was unwell at the time.
Extremely, yes.
And I'm glad he's a lot better now.
Absolutely. But that was a brave thing to do, to step out and say, no, on behalf of my community, no.
No. David Lewis and Janice Lewis, when the Tom De Halden development, both voted no against that because it's not what their community wanted. Whether their party wants, they still, and I'll applaud anybody who does that, who goes against the party, but that they should be doing that anyway, it shouldn't be
Of course they should.
Party above constituents, it should be constituents above party.
Absolutely.
So
So what, we're, we're, we're an hour and fifty in, do you wanna do the senate campaign now or do you wanna schedule another one?
Well I I I'll say this now, I'm looking like I won't be standing for Lichard in the next commu- next round council elections. One, I'm not sure if I could anyway because I haven't lived in Bridgend for the last three years, I'm just outside incomer.
Yeah.
Because that was where I could live, that was the reason. I'm coming back to Bridgend, hopefully, if the council can sort it. Uh still not had a phone call back about that yet. Um by the end of, well, by beginning of next month, hopefully, because I've got fourteen, thirteen days to find somewhere to live.
Okay.
I know there is a provision that if you've worked in an area for the last year, like living in the area, you can stand. But I don't know whether that will include as a community councillor or not.
No, it's an interesting question, is that.
It's something that I I may ask, but at this present time, um I'm leaning that I may not be standing, I think I'm about seventy, eighty percent sure I won't be standing, which would be a real shame, I've enjoyed working on Coity Community Council, there's a lot of work still left to be done, a lot of amazing work, and we're looking into bringing more allotments to the area and other things, especially with the the uh community centre in Lichard and things like that.
Yeah.
I've worked with some amazing people, Martin, Alan, um Kerry Evans, Alison Hughes Dean Barrington, Richard, councillor Richard Young.
Yeah, he's a great guy.
Christopher Walbert and Cherry and Anita, they've all been amazing. But I've gotta credit the staff and Harris.
Yeah.
And Phil, I can't remember his last name at this moment, I've known him for four years, I can't remember his last name. Without community, the community councils, without the fantastic staff, these are the clerks, the RFOs and anybody else who works for him. Us as councillors wouldn't get anything done.
No, absolutely not.
Really, and they are the backbone of our council, they research a hell of a lot of stuff for us, find out things that we may not have time because community councils
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, you can get a re- remuneration and it's not much, it's roughly about a hundred and fifty pound, varies from council to council for one year.
I think it's two pound eighty-eight a week, it works out, that.
Yeah.
Yeah, before tax.
People like Steve and that, I was a carer when I first started, so I had that. Um it's not something we can do as a full-time job because you can't do it because there's no pay in it.
Yeah.
But so people have to have the work, that's why we have to rely on clerks and RFOs and other people to, to do the hard graft for us, I suppose, and we get all the glory at the end.
To deliver the will of the council as well, you know, councillors make decisions and then the staff go away and deliver that, and and that's where that relationship is so important. You've got to have a close working relationship, you've got to be on the same page. And, and that's where that relationship is so important. You've got to have a close working relationship. You've got to be on the same page.
I would love to talk, to do this sort of thing with clerks of councils as well.
Uh, more difficult.
I, I know, because I think they do fantastic work and.
Yeah.
Not even us as councillors understand everything that they do. And it would be good, even us, so we could see.
I've been mayor of Bridgend Town Council since January. I'm still learning stuff now. So it's not, you know, it's not. It's not easy. There's so many regulations.
Yes, and there's so many things we can fall foul of as a council.
Yes, and it's our duty to make sure we don't fall foul of them.
Yes. Because we, we don't just have the normal regulations that are passed down by Welsh Government or given to us by One Voice Wales. But we have our own standing orders as well that we have to abide by. This is. Policies of how a motion is brought through and voted on or discussed to a media policy. Of what, what we can put on websites, what we can broadcast and things like that.
Yeah.
And it, it's not just one little page with a couple of points on it. It's pages and pages of stuff.
Oh, yes. We're redrawing ours up now.
Which they should be reviewed every couple of years as it is.
It should.
Times change.
We're reviewing them now so we can put them ready for the next term because, you know, we're duty bound now to, to deliver the best counsel for the, the incoming councillors.
Yeah.
As I say, some of us may think we're going to be one of them. It's, it's not our decision, so.
Right. We are running very long on this one.
Yes, we are.
Sure we could go on all night. Very quickly, uh, you stood for Seneth.
Yeah.
And you did extremely well, three thousand votes.
Three thousand and sixty, fifty-six, I think it was, or three hundred and forty-seven, three thousand and forty-something, I think.
So that's a, a jump of three thousand and forty-six percent on your last.
It is.
Did do.
Exactly.
Is one of the most successful independent candidate for share of votes in Wales as well. So congratulations, well done on that and hard work. And I watched most of your videos, walking around, speaking to different people. Steve, Martin and.
Yeah, I enjoyed, I genuinely enjoyed those. They were, the first couple were weird. Once you get past the weirdness, it was. Look, this, this, this was a campaign that we're never going to see again. Um, you know, and it's something that I ca, I, I raised. At the start, I wasn't even allowed to put leaflets through doors.
No.
You know, we, we, we've got a, Covid was a very strange time and, you know, we've, we misremember a lot of it back. When we were in, when I had filed my papers and I was officially a candidate, I wasn't even allowed to put a leaflet through a door. Now, the big parties could pay the postmen to put it through.
Yeah.
And I know you spoke to, I think it was Alex, about the disparity in independents and parties. They spent millions of pounds on campaigns and there's, there's no getting away from that. I had a budget, I think I spent fourteen hundred pounds, which is a lot for an independent candidate. That, that is a lot. Um, but I was sat in my house with my phone, sitting in this chair, talking to people. And I was getting leaflets from all of the three major parties, the Conservatives, Labour and Plaid Cymru were throwing out leaflets, which I couldn't do. At the moment that I could deliver leaflets, I started to deliver leaflets, but I wasn't allowed to canvass. So again, I used this phone because I couldn't knock doors and talk to people. I wasn't allowed to. So I had to work around guidelines, restrictions and all of, all of those things. But you know what? Look, I had the time of my life doing that. Honestly, I loved it. I lost over a stone in weight. I was, I walked half a million steps in four or five weeks. I. There's a live video of me stepping on the black thorn, talking to Martin. I got bitten by a dog when I was putting a leaflet through a letterbox in Porthcawl. I loved it. And, you know, we, we've spoken about the rough and tumble of, um, of politics. There was some rubbish that was going on in the background. There were a couple of fake Twitter and Facebook profiles set up. Some to have a go at me, some to have a go at the Labour candidate. I didn't.
You've gone on mute. You've gone to mute. Hello? Gone mute. I can't hear you.
Hang on.
Ah, there we go. I can hear you now.
Yeah, sorry. Somebody was phoning me, Luke. I do apologize about that.
Oh, no, it's okay.
I, I didn't take any notice of it. I, I enjoyed the campaign for what it was. Um, I enjoyed the stone that I lost. Um, I wish I could have taken part in hustings. I wish I could have spoken to more people on the doorstep. I, for, for an hour and a half, I had got the largest voter share of an independent in the history of the Senate. Um, the council leader from Blindadwent, I think, beat me an hour and a half later. Um, but I'm not, you know, for, for my first attempt, I, I loved it. You know, I had some amazing people come out and help me. Um, I was in a fortunate position because I was on paid leave as such because I had. Because I was working in the Welsh Government and Covid hit. I didn't take in my annual leave entitlements. I worked every day here. So I then had a huge amount of leave at the end of my, my contract, so I took that. And I had a great time and, you know, that, that'll be in the history books forever. You know, I was, I think I was forty-six votes or forty-five votes behind the Plaid Cymru candidate. Um, which isn't a knock on the Plaid Cymru candidate, but it was, I went up against the, the, the National Party of Wales in a Welsh parliamentary election and got within a whisker. Um, and I had, I had an amazing time and. Is, is a, is a constituency seat winnable in a national election with our current setup? Probably not. Um, there's too much against you. You know, you, you've given me the plaudits. I've said I did the best ever in twenty-one years. I lost by nine thousand votes, Luke.
Yeah, well, I, I, I know. Um.
I, I can spin this any way I want. I got walloped and, and, and I got walloped by a good candidate. But I don't think I was nine thousand votes worse, but I lost by nine thousand votes. And, and that kind of mountain. When I was out delivering leaflets, party leaders had national television coverage. They get national radio coverage, they get newspaper inches. I didn't get any of that. I was fighting from underneath. I gave it the best I had. Um, as I said, other people were arguing about me, other people were making stupid comments about me. I didn't engage in any of it. I, I, I ran a positive campaign and I asked everybody around me to join me on a positive campaign. Um, and. I got walloped.
Well, I, I think you can hold your head high. You did well. You did very well. Yes. You did get walloped by nine thousand votes, but you didn't have a leader of a party turning up to your constituency going, vote for this candidate. A leader of not just your local National Party in Wales, but in West, from Westminster as well.
Absolutely.
So they really ran it out and you can't compete with that when you're an independent. Um, that is a problem, something does have to change.
I, I, I did something that no independent candidate's ever done in this area, at least. I got two leaflets out to every single house.
I thought you were going to say step on the black thorn.
Oh, I did. Oh, that was so, I go back and I watch that because like ten seconds earlier, I don't feel safe and it's like, oh! And then Marty says, oh, have you tangled your wire? No, I've got a thorn in my foot. Anyway, no. I, I managed to get two leaflets to every single house in, in the area. One of them was delivered by, for, for free by Royal Mail, which is a service that they offer. Um, the other one was hands-delivered to thirty-six thousand houses by myself or three or four other people who helped me.
I did offer, you just didn't call me.
Well, you just got crazy, Luke, honestly.
And with Covid and I would have had.
But yeah, exactly. But, 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 but the Labour and the Conservative and the Plaid Cymru lot, the lot, leaflets. I had seven or eight of them and, and that does make a difference. You know, I, I, I went to Royal Mail and I said, well, look, you know, I, I had fantastic people who, who put money into backing me and I had a pot of money. I could have printed a third leaflet perhaps, um, possibly. I, I was, I was on a roll at the time and I thought I might dip into my own, my own pocket. And I thought, well, I could do a third leaflet. There's no way I can hand deliver them because I was still delivering the first leaflet the day before the election. Um, so I went to Royal Mail and I said, well, you know, if I gave this to you and you've done the free one, if I paid you to deliver another one, how much would that be? Twelve grand? Twelve thousand pounds. Now.
Thirty-six thousand.
For thirty-six thousand leaflets. So that's what has to change in democracy. What, was I the best candidate? In my opinion, yes. In other people's opinion, no. Was I nine thousand worse than another person? I don't think so. But there were people within the constituency who'd never heard of me, who don't know who I am. Didn't know my policies and I wasn't able to deliver that to them, to, for them to consider me. I'm not saying they would have voted for me. But there, there were people, and I've got a good profile in Bridgend, but the, the area as it stands, I know Ian spoke about the boundary review. There's people in North Cannell, you've never heard of me, Luke, you know, and, and, and there's. There's, there's no mechanism for me to deliver my manifesto to them. There were no hustings. Where I could have spoken to a room of maybe fifty of them, but even that's not going to make a big difference. I'm not allowed on the telly. I mean, they gave, they gave a podium to the guy from abolish the Sen, the, the Senate, you know. On what basis? He had a mandate to speak on national television. I got more, do you know what? I got more votes than the abolish the Senate did in six or seven constituencies combined. So how the BBC can decide they get a platform and I don't is, is beyond me. But you don't, you, as an independent, you don't get a platform. But what we have to do as independents is build upwards. What we need to do is, we've proven in the first five years, we've proven what independents can do at the ground level.
Yeah.
The next, the next target is to get enough independence in BCBC to make a real difference and to show people that what we're saying can be delivered. And, and it won't always be about all independents voting the same way in BCBC. It's about consensus of opinion and working for the people. Then we go and we start sorting out what we believe are the problems in BCBC. Then you look at another Senate campaign from there when people can see in reality. Because the guy who beat me in Blindadwent is the independent leader of the local authority there. And they're proving what can be done. And that, that's how you change democracy. It's the hard yards and it's generations away. But trust me, it's doable.
When you mentioned that you thought, you said people didn't know who you were, even in North Cannell, in Cannell. It reminded me of Tory Boy that not many people in Middlesbrough knew who Sir Stuart Bell was, their MP for the last twenty, twenty odd years.
But again, you know, going back to another, going back to another scene where I can't remember the, the guy who does, does the documentary, but he goes into a shock and he says. Do you know who Stuart Bell is? Or he's that idiot that lives over in Paris and never comes here. So you won't, oh, I'll vote for him though, because my dad always voted for them.
Yeah.
It, it, it's a must-watch, probably for just anaeracts like us. It's probably not a mainstream thing that people would care for. It's probably the equivalent of Love Island to many people. But it shows the frustrations.
I don't think it should be just for anaeract. I, I think genuinely ordinary people could get enjoyment and. Information from what that documentary was. I think it was great. He did set out to make the documentary, he did. And then it's currently on Amazon Prime.
It is.
I'm plugging everything today and I'm.
Exactly. I hope you're on a, I hope you're on a commission.
For, for any of this.
I, I watched the documentary after my campaign. I really wish I'd, I'd made something similar. Not, not in the kind of production where I wish I documented it, because there are highs and lows in a campaign. There are days when you feel, eh, look, look. Couple of days before, I genuinely thought I could win it. And, and then I got walloped by nine thousand, so it shows that. But, but you, you have your ups and your downs and running in a Senate campaign and running in a council by-election, it's all the same. And, and you get your ups and your downs and you get your good days and you get your bad days. Um, and it's about trying to have more good days than bad. And it's about trying to remember, I, look.
It's remembering why you're doing it.
I honestly don't know what, I honestly don't know what would have happened if I had one because, you know, it, it, it had never been done before. Martin Bell is the only real independent. I mean, there was, there was a, there was a Welsh parliamentary lady who was voted as an independent, but there's more in the backstory. She was married to a Labour MS and it, it's difficult, but I loved it. You know, I, I, I walked into a pub and I'm not, I'm not saying this for the wrong reasons. I, I walked into a pub after the count. And again, it was Covid restrictions. We've got to try and remember back. It was a beautiful sunny day. I walked into a beer garden. Yeah, I know, but we went to the bells and we sat outside. And, and I'm not saying this for effect, Luke. The entire, I'm getting goosebumps now. The entire beer garden got up and applauded. And I nearly cried. Um, because again, I got walloped by nine, you don't, you don't clap a football team off when they've lost nine nil. But I was really proud of what I achieved. And, and some very learned political people came up to me after the count. And did congratulate me on a good campaign. And, and it is, it is one for the history books. I've kept all of my leaflets. I've kept, I've got all of my videos. Um, and I hope I achieved something. I hope I, I hope. Politics and voting is about habits. And, and I hope that some people on that election voted independent for the first time. And, and they broke their habit of always voting the same way. Because as you say, it was a three thousand gain and then, and, and when we're in this game, we look at swings and we look at. I had a swing vote of over three thousand, which is unheard of. You know, it, it was, it was, it was the first time that sixteens could vote. And sixteens do tend to go towards Labour or Plaid Cymru.
Yeah.
And, and both of those, having a wider audience, actually lost a vote. So this isn't about taking votes away from Labour. What I'm saying, what I'm saying is, is that the independent movement in Bridgend. Gained a lot of traction in that campaign. And, 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 and I'll look back on that with a lot of pride, you know, I. Yeah, I got walloped, but I also walloped abolish. I walloped the sitting MS, uh, who stood as an independent. I walloped. Uh, the Lib Dems, I walloped lots of people myself. Um, and, and, and I mean that in a respectful way as well. In the same way, I say I got walloped. Um, I, I finished fourth out of nine. Um, and I was, don't forget, again, going back to trolling. I put five hundred pounds of my own money up as a deposit on that and I was told I wouldn't get it back. And you've got to get ten, uh, five percent to get your deposit back and I got ten. So, so people said I wouldn't get five percent and I doubled it. In my heart of hearts, I hoped for two thousand. On the day I thought I got two and a half, to break three, I was really proud of that.
Okay then. So very last question. Are you going to slam it again next time? Oh, even before. Yeah.
Was that quick enough for you?
Yeah, yeah, before I finish. Would you consider Parliament though?
No.
No. Local politics, it seems to what I find with councillors, local politics is more important.
You, you discussed this with Ian last week over the stupid boundary commission. I'll tell you now, go to the, go to the bookies, you're going to get whatever, whatever thing, the way is being divvied out. I'm sorry, Jamie Wallace is going to be a one-term MP. The way that, the, the, um, the proposal is there, you've got an amalgamation of Bridgend, Aberavon and. My stay, well, what's it called? Ogmor. You've got two of the safer seats for Labour in Wales merging into the third. There will be two Labour MPs in the next general election. So for whatever happens here. Um, that's not, that's not a political statement, it's a statement of fact. Um, it's the two, two of the, um, safer seats. So, sorry, there, there's, I don't think I'd like to be an MP either. Commons is too stuffy for me. The Senate's a nice building, you know. And I can see more powers coming to Wales, but, um, no, what, Seneth in five years, four and a half years, I don't know. Um, but not as an MP.
That's okay. Okay, right. I've got to say this before I go because my son keeps telling me, you don't do, you don't say it down. Please like, share and subscribe. Uh, I've got a little story about my subscriptions on YouTube. I have four.
Okay, go on.
I have four subscriptions on YouTube, which I'm really proud of. I know it's only four and it's not a big thing.
I tried, but I followed the Facebook link, which takes me through to a different YouTube landing page. So when it says subscribe, I've got to log in. I'll do it. I'll do it through YouTube, right?
It's okay. I was taking my son to a drum lesson on Wednesday and I said, I'm really proud. I had nearly a hundred views on Ian's video since Saturday, which.
Yeah.
By far and away the highest so far, which is great. And thank you everybody for doing that. And I said to him, I've got four subscriptions. Unfortunately, one of them is myself. And he goes, yeah.
That's fine.
And, and he goes, yeah, I have two of them. And I said, oh, so I've got four subscriptions, three of them are from this car with two people. Because he's liked my, he's subscribed to my page.
I think I know where the other one might be, but I won't name them publicly.
I think it might be Martin because.
That's who I was going to go with.
I'll give, I'll, I'll give it to Martin. He has been very supportive of me in this endeavour and as yourself and.
Well, the thing is, I was stuck then because, because Martin referred to me in his thing, but he refused to name me. So I was going to do the same thing back, but there you go.
Well, I, I'll, I'll, I'll refer to Martin because I.
And you know he's going to watch this right till the very end through your rant and he'll like this now.
Yes. I, 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 I think I upset him the other day and I, I apologized to him and that.
Do you know, there's a really quick story. Do you know, I met Martin. I met him in a Facebook Messenger group. Because we were the only two lonely idiots still awake at half. because we were the only two lonely idiots still awake at half four in the morning watching a count on BBC One. He thinks it was Brexit. I think it was a by-election.
Uh, that would have been twenty sixteen, so it'd been Brexit.
My, my, my timelines are all over the place, but I made contact with Martin. I've gone back, I've looked at the first message. Because he was just being elected to Coitie and I sent him a message, you up? What are you making of this vote then?
See, I would be up as well, but I wasn't.
Was born.
Okay, well, thank you everybody for joining us today and thank you, Stephen, for giving me your time and letting me rant when this is an interview about yourself and I had my rant.
And don't forget, end it with like, share and subscribe.
Uh, I don't need to, you already did.
Have a lovely evening, Luke, and keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you, thank you. Goodbye, everyone.